He didn't away with that when he came back.
the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated, and Sean, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember DeCoursey.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Excuse. All right, we have one proclamation this evening, so I'm going to move over to the podium. And we have a few Auburn Mountain View High School DECA students in the audience tonight, and if you could please come forward, Addison Jones, Eliza Dianda, and Nolan Hash. Did I get the right names?
Correct.
All right, so they are in the DECA program, and we are here tonight to proclaim Financial Literacy Week, and so the proclamation is, whereas in America today, 77% of Americans are living paycheck to paycheck, and whereas when our citizens improve their financial literacy, they will be better equipped to effectively manage their finances in an increasingly complex financial world, and whereas national research continues to highlight points of concern for how Americans manage personal debt, retirement savings, and daily budgetary challenges, and whereas it is important for both adults and our youth to demonstrate proficiency in personal financial management, and whereas while our government is taking decisive action to promote financial stability, we ultimately depend on our willingness as individuals to empower ourselves and our families with financial knowledge, and whereas the designation of Financial Literacy Week helps raise public awareness about the importance of financial education in Auburn, now therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of Auburn, do hereby proclaim December 16th through the 20th, 2019, as Financial Literacy Week in the city of Auburn, and encourage all citizens of Auburn to observe this week with programs and activities to improve their understanding of financial principles and practices dated the 16th day of December 2019. And I will give this to you, and I'm assuming that at least one of you has some words that you would like to share.
We're really excited.
Come on over by the microphone, so it can be picked up.
We're really excited to promote financial literacy, it's really important for, like, especially upcoming generations now to learn about financing and budgeting, and just learn skills that they're going to need, like, later in life, so they can continue to pass them down.
Well, thank you, thank you for your work in DECA to encourage people in the community to be financially literate, and if you would go forward and accept the appreciation of council for the work that you're doing, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
So we have, is it Boy Scouts or Cub Scouts? Cub Scouts, we have a Cub Scout group, PAC, in our audience tonight, PAC 432, correct? So I'd like to say welcome to all of you for being here this evening, and hopefully you heard about financial literacy, and we can count on you to have good savings accounts and be good with your money as you move forward to become adults and even before that. Did you want a photo? Okay, did you want full council up there?
Here too, all right. Council, down, we'll take a photo. Do you want somebody to take the photo? Sean's going to do it, all right. So we can see, especially in Auburn.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, we will move to appointments, we have a reappointment to the boards and commissions this evening, City Council to reappoint David Jensen to serve a new three-year term on the Transportation Advisory Board, the term will expire December 31st, 2022, do we have a motion? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I make the motion to ex... I just make the motion, right?
Yeah, make the motion to approve.
I make a motion to accept David Jensen on the Transportation Advisory Board.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Brown.
I would second that motion, Mayor.
Thank you, all right, comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of David Jensen being reappointed to the Transportation Advisory Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, we will move to audience participation, this is the place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the City Council on any issue, those wishing to speak are reminded to sign in on the form provided. Is anyone here wanting to speak? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record, and please keep comments to three minutes or under.
Yes, my name is Bob Zimmerman, 33029, 46th Place South. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilman Pelosi, and Councilwoman Trout Manuel, and Councilwoman Largo Wells, because they are the only three that ever expressed any serious concern about the issues I've raised, and only two of them have ever responded to an email or a phone call. So that's the situation we have here, it almost looks like we've got a gag order on this council, but, and I'd also like to apologize to most of you on the directors and other staff, I'm sorry you have to listen to this, but the problem is that I'm not suicidal. I'm not willing to risk my life, my wife, or my house, to somebody saving a few yards of concrete or a few feet of pipe to make dangerous projects, to put people's lives at risk. Now, on September 16th of this year, in Farmington, Farmington, Maine, a fireman was killed investigating the smell of propane, that leak was an underground leak in a new building, and that propane was trapped in the basement of that building. Now, the barriers that they have approved next to us are just as effective as that, I have thousands of data points that show the wind will never clear that thing out. It's the same problem that killed those three kids up there at, I think, Blaine, someplace where they had that pipeline thing happen up about 20 years ago, vapors pooling on the ground in the bottom of the crick bed. Now, the attorney told me that all the code questions are supposed to go to him, and the mayor wants to shut down the code campaign, and it's really pointless to have a code campaign, because you're not going to enforce it anyway, they have the right to do it, to do whatever the heck they want. I have talked to lots of people in this state, and a lot of them would like to do something about this mess, but there's nothing they can do. You know, when you have a hierarchy, or not a hierarchy, but a, no, I can't think of the term I want to use, a single person that controls everything, like Mayor Backus does in this city, there's nothing can be done. And I have a nephew who happens to be a sheriff in another county, he told me that there's absolutely nothing can be done in this state if the mayor decides not to enforce the laws. I would think that when your interpretations are not consistent with industry standards and safety, I would think you would kind of think, well, maybe there's something wrong, but it looks like my time is up, and I hope that when our new council starts, they will do something. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor Buckus, and City Council members and guests over here, my name is James Warren, I reside at 115 Cedar Lane in Pacific, but I have stock in the city of Auburn, because I was two years as the Vice President of the PSTA, I'm in my second year as Community Chair Parent Engagement, and I have worked with the Auburn Food Bank volunteering, and I've kind of had a heavy heart, because they're cutting back, you know, our president, on our seniors, and our veterans, and our single parents, and I'm out here in the community, and it's a real crisis, that's even on top of the homeless situation, and I'm just hoping that we can get together as a community, along with Pacific Council, and put something together to help, you know, cushion this, because it's very crucial, it's crucial. If you're privileged, if you're not used to eating bologna sandwiches, and eating mayonnaise sandwiches, and going to sleep without a meal, because your father's not there, and your mother's on meth and crack, you don't understand the seriousness of this. Everybody's not a drug addict, everybody's not just a freeloader that don't want to work, but you can't get veteran and seniors to work 20 hours a week to get a $2 check. And also, I want to thank you again for, I messed up proclamation for Auburn Mountain View, the Literacy Week, man, we need literacy 365 days a year with our youth, because they're struggling, and the battle, whether people want to hear it or not, is with the internet, it is with the hip-hop generation, and if they can get the weak youth, those are the ones that we're losing, thank you.
Thank you, we have already drafted letters with Debbie Christensen from the Auburn Food Bank to share with our Washington DC representation on the SNAP program and the impact that has on our community, so thank you for your words and your support. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right, come forward and give your name and address for the record, please.
Virginia Haugen, 2503 R Street, Southeast. Again, I would like to thank John Holman, Largo Wells, and Bill Pelosi for serving so honorably on a city council that I twice had an opportunity to serve on, I served with Bill on a couple of committees, and hard worker, someone who was very, very good to work with. I also would like to thank whoever put together that little ceremony, because I just ate the best cookie I have ever eaten in my whole entire life, guaranteed, thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Seeing none, we will move on, Council Ad-Hoc Committee reports, Council Ad-Hoc Committee Chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks, and may give their recommendation to the City Council if any, we currently have one ad hoc committee, that is Finance, Chair Wells is absent this evening, so we will go to Councilmember DeCoursey, the other member of the ad hoc committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Wells and I reviewed the claims vouchers for the period dated December 16th, 2019, and the vouchers were in the amount of $5.89 million, and we had no questions, we recommend approval by council. Also reviewed the payroll vouchers for the period covering November 26th through December 11th, 2019, the amount of approximately $2.5 million, and recommend approval for that as well.
Thank you. All right, moving to the consent agenda, all matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed, do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Holman.
Moved to second.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
The consent agenda is comprised of minutes of the November 25th study session, minutes of the December 2nd regular council meeting, and of course, you heard from Councilmember DeCoursey, addressing the claim vouchers and payroll vouchers.
Thank you, are there any questions or comments? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, we have no unfinished business, but we do have some new business this evening, that is the 2020 Deputy Mayor Selection, City Council to nominate and select a council member to serve as Deputy Mayor for 2020. So we will now take nominations for Deputy Mayor, nominations do not need to be seconded, and a council member may nominate themselves, a nominated council member may also vote for themselves. Under Council Rule 12.1.A, the most senior council member is automatically nominated for the position of Deputy Mayor, Councilmember DeCoursey is currently the most senior council member under Rule 12.1.A.1.B. Councilmember DeCoursey, do you accept the nomination?
I do, Mayor.
All right, are there any other nominations for Deputy Mayor? If there, since there are no other nominations, all those in favor of selecting Councilmember DeCoursey as Deputy Mayor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Congratulations, Councilmember DeCoursey, you are the Deputy Mayor for 2020. All right, moving on to ordinances, ordinance number 6731, and ordinance authorizing the renewal of ordinance number 6555, with amendments for Astound Broadband LLC franchise agreement number FRN19-0015 for a telecommunications system. Do we have any staff report on?
No staff report, you have previously received a staff report and held a public hearing on this, where there was no comments.
Great, thank you, do we have a motion? Councilmember DeCoursey.
I move to adopt ordinance number 6731.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Holman.
Moved to second.
Thank you, Councilmember DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor, as you mentioned, this is the renewal of a, of a, I'm sorry, of an agreement with Astound Broadband, as we've heard, we had both a study session and a public hearing on this, and recommend approval.
Thank you, questions or comments from council? All in favor of ordinance number 6731, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. Ordinance number 6740, an ordinance updating Auburn City Code to remove breed-specific language consistent with Chapter 16.08, the RCW, and to allow certain exemptions based on approved obedience training certification, do we have a motion? Councilmember Brown.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move, we adopt ordinance 6740.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, this last year on April 30th, Governor Inslee signed House Bill 1026, which prohibits local cities and counties from using breed-specific language when declaring dogs as dangerous or potentially dangerous, it also allows certain exemptions if a dog owner is shown to have compiled, complied with certain obedience behavior training. This change to the RCW 1608 is scheduled to go into effect on January 1st, 2020, and would contradict current Auburn City Code, the proposed ordinance would align Auburn City Code with the new requirements of RCW 16.08.
Thank you. Questions, comments? All those in favor of ordinance number 6740, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. Ordinance number 6744, an ordinance relating to property maintenance and amending Title 15 of the Auburn City Code, do we have a motion? Councilmember DeCoursey.
Move to adopt ordinance number 6744.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Baggett.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilmember DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor, in April of this year, city staff discussed with the City Council an overview of the multifamily housing program, and those programs are already in place, as well as programs in place in other cities, and the council asked the staff to look into other opportunities on additional programs and how they might look in Auburn, staff returned on August 12th, 2019, to bring a presentation where the additional programs were discussed, and we are looking at now of having an option that will work with a new dynamic population in Auburn, and also to enhance the current city codes, as well as to adopt the International Property Maintenance Code that will protect tenants, to be more fair to rental owners, protect tenants, and to be more fair to rental owners, so this recommendation is, ordinance is recommended for approval.
Thank you, questions or comments? All those in favor of ordinance number 6744, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. Ordinance number 6755, an ordinance revising business license inspections, modifying rental housing oversight, adding license revocation criteria, and amending Chapters 1.20, 5.15, and 5.22 of the Auburn City Code, do we have a motion? Councilmember DeCoursey.
Yes, I move to adopt ordinance number 6755.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Holman.
Moved to second.
Thank you, Councilmember DeCoursey.
This is also discussed along with ordinance number 6744, and as the Mayor mentioned, this does a business license modification for rental housing.
Thank you. All those in favor of ordinance number 6755, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, we will move to resolutions, resolution number 5475, a resolution adopting the 2020 state and federal legislative agendas, do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor, I move for the adoption of Resolution 5475.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Brown.
I'd second that, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor, each year, the city of Auburn adopts a state and federal 2020 legislative agenda to guide our work throughout the year, that's it.
All right, questions or comments from council? All those in favor of Resolution number 5475, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. Resolution number 5476, a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds collected under the provisions of Washington State House Bill 1406, and ordinance number 6732, to the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners, or skip, do we have a motion? Councilmember DeCoursey.
I move to adopt Resolution 5476.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Holman.
Moved to second.
Thank you, I should probably call you Deputy Mayor-elect, DeCoursey.
Well, thank you.
Let's try that one, that's a mouthful, Deputy Mayor-elect, DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor, we've heard a lot about the Senate House Bill 1406, and this is a bill that allows cities to take advantage of a sales tax recapture, to do some work for affordable housing, and as we've mentioned before, this is not a new tax, it's within the current sales tax base, and with that, Auburn will receive approximately $150,000 a year over the next 20 years, although it seems like a lot of money, you can't do a whole lot with $150,000 a year. So earlier, we, in February this year, we adopted a resolution to enter into a local agreement with eight other cities, total of nine cities altogether, to form the South King County Housing and Homeless Partnership, which is now known as skip, and this resolution allows us to take the monies together with the other cities and pool it, so we can have greater leverage in making sure we can address the issues of affordability across our South County region, it also provides us a better opportunity to bond against some of these dollars if we choose to do that, raising even more money to better support affordable housing in the future.
Thank you, comments from council? All those in favor of Resolution number 5476, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. Resolution 5477, a resolution authorizing a letter in support of King County Metro's locally preferred alternative for rapid ride I-line, do we have a motion? Councilmember Brown.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to move Resolution 5477 for adoption.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, Resolution 5477 authorizes approval of a letter of support of King County Metro's locally preferred alternative for rapid ride I-line.
Thank you, questions or comments? All those in favor of Resolution number 5477, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. Resolution number 5478, a resolution authorizing a letter in support of King County Metro's proposed transit service changes, do we have a motion? Councilmember Brown.
There we go, thank you, Mayor, I would like to move adoption of City Council Resolution number 5478.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman.
Moved to second.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown.
Yes, Mayor, Resolution number 5478 authorizes the approval of a letter of support of King County Metro's proposed transit changes within the city of Auburn.
Thank you, comments? All those in favor of Resolution number 5478, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. Resolution number 5479, a resolution establishing a 2020 human services work plan, do we have a motion? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I would like to make a motion for 5479, I'm sorry.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember DeCoursey.
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilmember Trout Manuel.
On October 14th, 2019, the Human Services Committee held a joint meeting with the Auburn City Council, during the same evening, Cloudbuster, a consultant delivered a presentation to both committees and the council that provided an overview of the city of Auburn's community needs assessment, during the November 25th, 2019, regular scheduled monthly Human Services Committee, the committee developed a recommendation for the mayor and the council's consideration that is based on the October 14th discussion, finding the community needs assessment, the community recommended is provided and attached, well, anyways, they gave us two attachments, A and B, so the staff has prepared Resolution 5479, which establishes a 2020 human services work plan, that's intended to further inform the community... work plan that is intended to further inform the community, council, administrations of option actions and recommendations, as well as a better regional understanding of how need-by communities are supporting human services objection.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor of Resolution number 5479, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. Resolution number 5480, a resolution authorizing an airport office lease with Skyline Leasing LLC. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move the adoption of Resolution number 5480.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Baggett.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Adoption of Resolution number 5480 authorizes the mayor to negotiate and execute a lease agreement with Skyline Leasing LLC for office space in Auburn's municipal airport. And I would also like to take the opportunity to thank staff for all of the work that they do on all these resolutions and ordinances, preparing this council to make these decisions through numerous study sessions and whatnot. It can go fast here when we're making these motions and adopting them, but there's a lot of work that goes into it, so I want to thank the staff for that.
Thank you. All those in favor of Resolution number 5480, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. And one final resolution for 2019, Resolution number 5482, a resolution amending a previously approved lease term related to the Auburn Consolidated Resource Center. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I move for the adoption of Resolution 5482.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor. This adoption of 5480 is authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Benson and Kay Louie, is it?
Lou.
Lou. That includes a first right of offer clause.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? All those in favor of Resolution number 5482, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, we will move to mayor and council member reports. At this time, the mayor and city council may report on significant items associated with their appointed positions on federal, state, regional, and local organizations. And for one last time, we will begin with Deputy Mayor Pelosi. You're not going to do that.
No report.
Ah. Even if you had 20 things, you were just going to do that tonight, weren't you? All right, we will move on to Councilmember Baggett.
No report.
Wow. All right, Councilmember Decorse.
So for the next hour, on December 4th, I attended the Affordable Housing Advisory Board meeting in Olympia, and the purpose of that meeting was to finalize the Affordable Housing Advisory Board's 2020 legislative action plan. There are a total of 18 items on that action plan this year, and I passed that along to Dana. And although the action plan is a draft at this point in time, we're hoping that within the next few days, we'll actually have the final plan. There's only a few minor modifications to the plan itself. But as of note, there are two items in there that were supported by the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, but not approved by the Legislative Priorities Committee that I participated in as a majority approval. And those items are a requirement for accessory dwelling units within cities to be mandated for cities in relation to property usage. And the second item requires cities to modify various types of housing allowed, single-family parcels within urban growth areas. Both those items are opposed by the Association of Washington Cities, of whom I represented on the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. So it was passed by the majority in the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, but as of note, AWC is working closely with the Affordable Housing Advisory Board to kind of finalize the details. The AWC is not opposed to the type of action to be taken, or opposed to it being a mandate and not giving cities more control, more flexibility. Following day, on December 5th, I attended my last Regional Transit Committee meeting, moving on to another committee, along with Joe Wells, our transportation planner. This was a special meeting as a follow-up to our regular November 20th meeting, and the purpose of this meeting was to continue our discussion and to approve the metro's system evaluation plan, and also metro's mobility framework recommendations. The mobility framework has a number of different items in it related to requirements that were established by the metro equity cabinet. The cabinet is made up of users of metro and other people within the region to give metro a better idea of how the bus system is working or not working. So those two items were both approved, and the new committee members will move forward in 2020 to expand upon that. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Trout Manuel. Report. Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
No report. Thank you.
Councilmember Holman.
Well, after two years of work, I'm going to have to close with this. The four counties of Snohomish, King, Pierce, and Kitsap form an organization called Puget Sound Regional Council, and I sit on a board called Growth Management Policy Board, of which my colleague Claude Decorse is going to be moving over to as, as I vacate it. And we met on Thursday, December 5th, from noon until 4:30 PM, normally we meet in the morning, to finalize the final amendments from two years' worth of work to approve Vision 2050. This is revised every 10 years, and we have been working on this for two years to get the language that all members of this policy board could agree to. It's been passed, moved forward to executive, and Claude, it's all yours.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman. Few, few items that have been on our calendars recently. On Wednesday, the 4th, I attended the mayoral roundtable on affordability for Pierce County. Looks like, hopefully, we will be able to move forward with a Pierce County organization similar to SKIP, South King Housing and Homeless Partners. Many of the mayors in Pierce County have been meeting over the last year and have been talking about affordability issues within each one of our cities, and we have been able to proudly share what we have been accomplishing with SKIP and even just creating SKIP. And so we are very encouraged and looking forward to what 2020 will have in store for a similar organization within Pierce County on housing affordability. On Friday, the 6th, along with a few of you, I attended the South Sound Chamber Legislative Coalition Breakfast over in Renton. That is many of the chambers in the South Sound area getting together. There were several senators and representatives onstage to answer questions. Three of them represent the Auburn area. That is Representative Stokesbury, and Entiman, and Senator Das. Stokesbury from the 31st, and Entiman and Das from the 47th. And so, as you know, the legislative session will get underway in early January, and we will be making visits down to Olympia to ensure that Auburn's voice and our legislative priorities, which council passed this evening, are heard and understood by our representatives. And then we had the Santa Parade on the 7th. And appreciate those of you that were able to attend, this is the first time that it has been motorized, and I hope all of you agree that it added quite an element of fun to the evening before Santa arrived. And so thanks to the Parks Department for putting on another great parade, and for all of the participants. This first year being a motorized event, we didn't know if vehicles or floats would be decorated and lit with, with holiday lights, but they certainly were, and it was a great deal of fun. And then, of course, had the annual tree lighting, and so thank you for helping us to celebrate the holiday season. We also, on the 13th of December, I have mentioned before, but the South King County mayor's police chiefs, city attorneys, and prosecuting attorneys have been meeting for the past few months to talk about the filing practices for King County Prosecutor's Office, whether there is an arrest made that is, that is a felony, and if King County Prosecutor's Office chooses not to charge that felony, or they choose to make it a misdemeanor, and in many, if not most, cases, if it's a misdemeanor, it comes back to our municipal court to deal with. And so that adds a great deal of work, as well as a great deal of cost, to our municipal courts, to our cities. And we want to talk with, with King County Prosecutor Dan Satterberg about those charging practices and how we can best move forward, willing to work with his office to ensure that the proper filings are made and that they take responsibility, because even if it's not, if, even if they choose not to file it as a felony, it is still the responsibility of King County Prosecutor's Office to file that within their court system and not remand it back to the municipal court system. So we are looking to work with Satterberg to ensure that the proper filing methods and charges are made. And then this past Saturday, we had breakfast with Santa. There were two breakfasts, Councilmember Trout Manuel and I, and Councilmember Baggett were there to serve. It's always fun. Some people have made this an annual event for decades. There was one family that had been coming for roughly 30 years. Obviously, different generations of, of participants, but it is always a great deal of fun. And of course, Santa arrived to the delight of every age in the room, and took photos with all of the, the young children. Wanted to also let you know that we received a Happy New Year 2020 card from the mayor of Guanhan Municipal People's Government. And as you remember, Guanhan is one of our sister cities. And so I sincerely wish you and all citizens of Auburn Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, so I wanted to ensure that I pass that on from Du Sheng Wu, who is the mayor. And for one final time, I want to say thank you to Councilmember Wales, to Councilmember Holman, and Deputy Mayor Pelosi for your years of service to this community. You have made it a very interesting time. You have been dedicated to your oath of office. You have made it your passion, your work, and your focus to ensure the safety and the well-being of our community. We will forever be grateful for your service. There will be new council members coming to fill these seats, but they will never take your place. They will make their own mark, but you have made marks in this community that are distinctly your own, and we appreciate you a great, great deal. And I am going to tell you, I'm proud of myself for getting through that without crying, because you will be dearly missed. I have appreciated your guidance, your wisdom, your passion, and at times, your obstinance to ensure, not at all times, but at times, your obstinance to ensure that we were getting the right answer. And so one last time for 2019, Deputy Mayor, would you like to gavel us closed?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I almost broke the gavel.
We are adjourned. Thank you.